Good morning. This is March 30 at 2022, I should say, at 9:00 a.m. And before we move into council time in a couple of hours, we have two in-depth reports that are with us as work sessions. First will be the Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan, and then secondly, DEEP's 2021 Annual Report and their upcoming work plan. So let's go ahead. Mr. Klug, are you presenting for the Neighborhood Traffic Management?
Thank you, Council Chair and Council. My name is Rob Klug. I'm the county engineer for Clark County. And we're here today to brief you on the progress to date of our Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. As you may remember, we put this forward as a specific item on our planning docket for us to be able to come back to the council and talk with you about the potential of developing this program. I've been with the county 20 years, and the previous program was eliminated prior to my coming to the county. So for the last 20 years, when people have called up with neighborhood traffic concerns, we've had a very limited ability to resolve them. So next slide, please. So today, I will be kicking this off with some initial comments, and then I'll be handing it off to Judith Perez and Matt Griswold, both with PBS. They are the ones that have done the lion's share of the work to date on this. And the goal here is to give you a briefing of what we've done to date and to give you a little, an idea of where we could be going with this, understanding that right now there is no budget set aside for this. So kind of our overall goal is to have a discussion with the council and get the flavor and temperature from the council about how we would like to move forward as we move into budget season to talk about the costs and improvements that could be made to the system. Next slide, please. So we really want a goal of having a system that is going to be fair and appropriate across all requests that come in. It'll be, it's going to be data-driven, and we want to make sure that we're putting the improvements at locations where they are needed. We've done a lot of looking at speeds in the past in neighborhoods where we get a lot of requests. And generally, the prevailing speed on just about any county road is about four to five miles an hour over the posted speed limit. And so we get requests from people that have neighborhood traffic concerns. And we want to make sure that where we're putting these improvements that cost money to install and maintain are done in a prioritized manner and fairly across the entire community. Next slide, please. I do believe I've already got over this. So I'd like to hand this over to Judith to continue on with the presentation. And we'll be happy to take questions at any point or at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Actually, Matt will take the next slide.
Yeah, if you could, next slide. Currently, Clark County has a Neighborhood Traffic and Management Program in their code, and it's to address traffic calming for new residential development. The code provides guidance for urban local access roads as they're developed. This lists the criterias that are required to be met before traffic calming can even be requested of the developer. It doesn't give existing residential neighborhoods a path or a process to address traffic management on their existing streets. The proposed Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan will be giving existing neighborhoods a formal process that will be able to score and rank possible traffic management projects in their own neighborhoods. Next slide, please, and Judith is going to take the next one.
Thank you, Matt. So a Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, they are developed to improve safety and traffic concerns within and around residential neighborhoods. NTMPs, as they are called throughout the nation, provide residents the opportunity to voice their concerns about traffic-related issues such as speeding, traffic collisions, and cut through traffic. NTMPs are designed to identify and deliver solutions to holistically address neighborhood traffic concerns. Throughout our research, we have learned that successful NTMPs provide residents and neighborhood associations a platform to express a specific neighborhood traffic safety concerns that are analyzed, evaluated, prioritized, and implemented by the local agency annually throughout sustainable funded program. Next slide, please. PBS is working with public work staff to develop a comprehensive program that includes a systemic approach to handling neighborhood traffic management and calming projects, and applying the most appropriate traffic management strategy to a situation, to the situation at hand. So the proposed process framework identifies the steps by which staff and community members interact and participate in the NTMP. We have been tasked with the development of three NTMP concepts, so a high, medium, and a low concept. The NTMP concepts that we're developing consist on four basic stages or steps. We have the residence request, the evaluation, the engagement, and the implementation. Each stage will focus on specific tasks and concludes with implementation of a traffic management strategy. Our proposed NTMP framework is designed to empower residents to work with county staff in the identification and selection of traffic management, and also calming strategies and tools to address the residents' concern. Next slide, please. The PBS team conducted an extensive best practice review. We researched, our research conducted help in the development of the three proposed concepts that we're developing. PBS developed a survey of 19 questions responded by 15 local agencies in the Pacific Northwest. And this was to ascertain if they had an NTMP. And if so, how do they manage it? We had example questions that include, "Do you have an equity lens on your NTMP?" "Explain the request process," and "What traffic management tools or strategies you offer." Next slide, please. When asked to explain the request process, over 90% of server respondents indicated the most requests came from through a resident request, with neighborhood associations coming in at the second most used process. Next slide, please. When asked about the program elements, what program elements the NTMP included, 93% of the local agencies that participated in the survey indicated that the NTMP were engineer-based or quantitative in nature. Out of those surveyed, 20% of the local agencies indicated that they were developing an equity lens form for their NTMP program. We learned that equity lenses are being used by local agencies throughout the nation and Pacific Northwest to minimize unanticipated adverse consequences in a variety of contexts, including the analysis of proposed policies, institutional practices, programs, plans, and budgetary decisions. An equity lens utilizes a set of principles, reflective questions, and processes that focus on the individual, institutional, and systemic level. Next slide, please. When asked if their program prioritized projects, 53% of the respondents indicated that the NTMP included a project prioritization methodology. The proposed NTMP will include the prioritization of projects based on merits and needs, and this will mirror current efforts in the Public Works Department. Next slide, please. Survey participants indicated that they incorporated the following strategies in their NTMPs: bulbouts, also known as curve extensions; roundabouts or traffic circles; speed humps; radar speed trailers or signs; traffic islands; pavement markings; and signs. Next slide, please. So we have about a year to develop all components of the NTMP concepts. A key milestone is the opportunity to collaborate with the Neighborhood Association Council of Clark County. During our upcoming meeting with the NACC, C, we're hoping to learn available avenues or methods to collaborate with all neighborhood associations in Clark County. Next slide, please. As part of these efforts, we develop goals and strategies to guide the process and later on, the selection and implementation of projects. The proposed NTMP concepts we're developing share the following goals: enhance neighborhood livability and safety across all modes of travel by reducing the speed and impact of the equal or traffic on residential streets, while providing for the safe and efficient movement of persons and good throughout Clark County; also by promoting safety and comfortable conditions for residents, pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists on all local streets, while preserving access to emergency vehicles, public transit, and other users; by providing a consistent, feasible, and manageable procedure for addressing neighborhoods' traffic concerns on local streets, collectors, and arterials where a documented speeding problem, unacceptable cut-through volume, or other traffic factors adversely affects residents' safety. So in addition, the goals are and will be used to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion in Clark County neighborhoods. Next, Matt Griswold will provide you with a preview of some of the elements the proposed NTMP concept will include. Thank you.
Let me get back to slide 15. I think that's where we want to start. There we go. Okay. These are some of the possible traffic management tools that can be used as part of the Neighborhood Traffic, the Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan. One of them are the speed readbacks or feedback signs that are used in documented high-speed locations. They're, they're very useful. They're inexpensive. And another is a special neighborhood signs. It could be low-cost signs that are placed in planner strips and would be specific to the concern. And another is a Clark County website. And in the website, we'll have the Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan. It will be a library of what the goals are. It will have a request link so that if a resident wants to make a request, they just click the link and go in into it, and it's, they can develop their requests right there. A description of the process, and also a list of possible tools that could be used for traffic management. Pedestrian refuge islands are another item. They provide a safe refuge for pedestrians on higher-volume streets with higher speeds. Also, speed bumps are the most common used traffic measurement. They're very effective. They can be low cost per each, but in order to make them effective, many times you have to put quite a few of them in, and the price actually goes up substantially with them because you may end up having to put in 10, 15 of them to make them effective. And chokers are effective in reducing speeds and improving pet and bikes' safety, but they can be costly because they can affect the stormwater that needs to, that runs down the curbs, so they can get costly also. Can we go on to the next slide, please? Currently, Clark County has two of these signs in use, and they have four more ordered. They should be coming in shortly. We, they are currently being placed as required with supporting traffic data. As, so they are being rotated from place to place. They're put in a sleeve in the ground, and what is nice is the sleeve is left in the ground and so that they can be moved from location to location. And as, as they're needed, they can come back to a specific location, be reused. They're really only effective for one to two months, and then the drivers become numb to them, and they begin to lose the effectiveness. We know this because the signs actually record the speeds and the volumes, and you can actually see with the data that's recorded that the speeds start to go back up after two or three months. And this information is also passed on to Clark County Sheriff's Department so that they can target some enforcement in that area as needed. Can we go on to the next slide, please? I think everybody has probably seen this RFB on 88th Street. Currently, Clark County has two of these. This one is the one on 88th Street, just to the east, or excuse me, to the west of Andreessen, or no, St. John, St. John's, excuse me. And we have another one on 23rd, up by the hospital. They provide advance warning to the driver that a pet or bicycle is going to be crossing this, about to cross the street. They are expensive to install and should only be used on higher-volume streets and are not meant to be used on residential streets. If they were, they, they're too costly, and the neighborhoods would just become numb to them. One thing I would like to mention that we don't have a slide on is sidewalk gaps. The county has a sidewalk program, but it's meant to be used for missing long strips of missing sidewalks. Sections of sidewalk may be missing because they were not required when the property was developed back in the 60s and 70s. And now adjacent property has been developed, and they are required to provide sidewalks. And many times, this will leave a small gap across a property that doesn't have sidewalk. And the Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan will give residents a process to request that the missing sidewalk sections be filled in. With this, I would like to conclude and open it up to questions for any of us.
Questions from council? Well, I have one, I guess, to kick it off. How much, there's quite a bit involved beyond the analysis in doing the response to fix whatever is called attention to. So given all of that, what, what do you see as far as staffing that is needed in order to really have a program like this, which sounds wonderful, to be effective? How, how many people does this take?
So, Chair, if it's okay, I'd like to take this question.
Surely.
Okay. So part of what we're doing is, we're coming, the, the process of this was specifically set up to come up with three different levels of program. And once we have the approval, the nod from the council that we're going in the right direction to continue our analysis, the goal is to set up what would be a low, medium, and high-cost program. And that would ferret out the details of people associated with and dollars associated with the types of program that we would be able to implement annually. I will tell you this right now, everyone that we have is already completely consumed in their work. We do not have any ability to take on additional work with the people that we have. So we would be looking at proposing some form of additional staff to be able to manage the requests coming in, manage the program, and also design the, the, the project elements and put them out to construction.
Are you, I'm sorry, are you thinking of ongoing consultation in that regard? Or permanent staff? Or what are your thoughts?
I'm going to say this, and please, I, Matt and Judith, please don't take this the wrong way. Consultants are expensive. If we can find a way to hire staff to be able to do the work, we would go for internal staff because this would be a continuing program. That would be what we'd be proposing.
Thank you. Are there questions from council or thoughts, comments?
I'm sure.
Yes, Councilor.
So, Rob, I'll be curious to see what those, you know, low, medium, and high-cost sort of programs look like as, as you, you know, ferret out those details. But I don't really have any questions. I just, I'm really, really happy to see this. You know, in the six and a half years that I've been on the council, we've heard a lot of constituent inquiries and requests and questions, and, and traffic safety and neighborhood safety and speed are probably the number one, I don't want to say complaint, but the number one inquiry we get from, from our community. And so having a program in place that has a consistent process for them to go through, and that they get responses, and they understand what, what we're doing to address their questions and address the safety in their neighborhoods, I think is critically important. So I really, really appreciate the work that you're doing. I'm also really happy to hear that we're ordering four more of this speed feedback signs. I know that does make a difference. While it's temporary, it does help. And having two for a county our size was not adequate. So I'm really glad to hear we have more of those on order. So, and again, you know, I've been really involved in sidewalks in the time I've been on the council, so I'm happy to hear that you're collaborating with the sidewalk program as well as you roll this one out. So all good stuff. So thank you so much.
So, Councilor, if I may respond to a couple of your question, or a couple of your comments. First of all, my, my first five years at the county, I took every request for neighborhood traffic calming, and it was completely unsatisfying for me to say, "I'm sorry, we don't have a program." Because we weren't solving anything. We were just letting it lay. And as, as an engineer, I want to solve problems. And so I'm, I'm happy to move this forward. The second thing is about the neighborhood, the, the speed warning signs. We've ordered them, and it's actually caught up in the global supply issue where some of the chips and things like that are coming, but they're not all here. So the faster we get those, the sooner we can get those out and serving the community. And if I could get out, get down there and push the boat to get it here faster, I'd be, I'd be doing it. So, thank you.
Chair?
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
I'll go ahead. I, Rob, Judith, Matt, thank you for this. I also, to echo Counselor Olson, am really happy to see this coming forward. I definitely agree that this is a large number of the, the concerns that we hear from constituents, and it's nice to know that we're, we're finally moving forward on something. A question that I have, and I'm presuming, but rather than just presume, I'll ask, will the, the proposals that come forward, the high, medium, low, and getting into the final plan, also talk about the methodology for how these projects will be prioritized? Because I imagine there will be more requests than we can deal with, and so how will we decide which ones to deal with first?
So I'm, I'm going to punt this one to Judith and Matt because I don't know the exact specifics of what's in their contract, and I'd rather have them answer, and then I can add more information as needed. Thank you.
So yeah, for each one of the concepts that we are talking about, the high, medium, and low, we will develop a prioritization methodology. So, so let's say you get a 200 projects, and you only have enough funding for 20. Then you'll be able to, to run it through a logical number database process that you can get to that conclusion at the end. And we're working on that right now. So, so the way we're developing is we're, we're working on, starting with the high process, and it's just like an onion, then we will peel the layers, and then get to the low. And then you will have options, you know, between your high and your low, which one, or, you know, maybe an à la carte, where you will develop the program that best meets the needs of Clark County. Matt, you haven't, go ahead, Rob.
Oh, we, we have a lot of experience with prioritization on our different programs, and our prioritization is basically set up to mirror the legal requirements and also the goals and the visions of the comprehensive plan. And so it's going to be very similar to what you see for other programs that we prioritize. It'll just have some details that are unique to the, each of the specifics.
Great, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor Mevaji?
So I've been trying to sit here thinking of a way, not to sound like a wet blanket, on this presentation. So let me just highlight, kind of, in sequence what other counselors have said. We all want safety. We all want to respond positively to neighborhood complaints. I thought we were doing that as best we could. I don't, I don't see the detail in this as to what we need additionally. I mean, we have neighborhood associations, and, and we are way behind in getting prosteal stood back up. We could just ask them, and they, you know, they're happy to tell us which roads need attention. You know, the, the matrix that you showed us, these are already things we have that we're doing. And of course, we need more of everything. I understand that. You know, we talk about, you know, we want to get through traffic commuters out of our neighborhoods. That's, that's a starting point for safety. And so that goes to design of primary and secondary roads, and it goes to, hey, what are, what are we looking at if we get a third quarter? What's that structure going to look like? And of course, we were told we have no budget to look at that. I, what I thought I heard at the beginning of this, we have no budget for this program. Yet I saw bits and pieces of what we're already doing. So for me, I don't know what you want. You know, what, you're looking to build a whole nother department to do traffic safety, neighborhood safety work? How much is that going to cost? What, what are the gaps in what we're already doing? I got it, you know, every department wants more people and more resources and to do what I think we're already doing in bits and pieces, probably not as much as we should. So I, Kathleen, I'd like to see a lot more detail on this. What, what is the budget request? I mean, I, I'd like to see the intersection of this discussion with our secondary and primary road structures in relationship to where's that third quarter going to be? What are we planning for the future to move higher-volume traffic along? You know, this, this also goes to law enforcement, you know, or State Patrol, or Sheriff, our police departments. Everyone complains that people aren't being ticketed from running lights and for speeding. I mean, you already, you began this by saying people are already driving five miles per hour over the posted speed limits in most locations. You know, that's an enforcement issue. These traffic calming devices work briefly. They work briefly. Those flashing lights, which are so expensive for crosswalks, they work until the neighborhood gets accommodated to them. And, you know, people walk by or, or ride their bicycle over, and the lights keep flashing for a few minutes, and the, and the roadway is clear, then people stop paying attention to it. And nothing's a panacea. And so we have to look for the most economical solutions. So I, I don't know where the detail is in this. I, I appreciate the briefing. It's a goal. I think every one of us shares for traffic safety, and we want to be responsive to the public. But I'm not sure where, where we're heading with this.
Chair, if I can. And so, Counselor Mevaji, thank you for the feedback. That is exactly the feedback that is being requested today by the council. The council did approve the staff looking into this program back in 2021 and is part of the community planning, as they said, the Transportation Planning Work Program. So this program and this work was approved by the council. And this is the first step to obtain the feedback from the council so that they can, staff can take the direction and the feedback and come back with a more detailed plan. So thank you for the feedback, and hopefully we'll, well, we will, we'll be coming back with more details. But that, the intent today was not to come with the costing because they want to make sure that they're on the right path per the council's direction. And as you mentioned with the law enforcement, you know, that, that is under a separate elected official and not something that we can, or I can, influence on their operations. But we can certainly share that feedback with them as well. Thank you.
Other comments or questions from council? I hear none. Do you have the feedback that you're seeking today? I hear none. Do you have the feedback that you're seeking today? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
So shall we turn now to the second work session?